So ladies and gentlemen, you're going to see over the next several months, a number of zoning amendments, regulation amendments, ordinances, site plan regulations, P O D discussions, all coming forward. It has been somewhere around 10 years since we've updated all of our regs. And the council actually gave direction to the town manager that this needed to start to happen. We didn't specifically tell them what order to go in, or which regs to look at, but we told them to look at all of them. So the planning board is going to have a lot of work to do, and they're getting things lined up, and we're going to start updating everything. So pay attention. We're not going to change the regulation. We're updating the regulations to make sure that they're compliant with what's today. So with that, does anyone have any questions? This is a public hearing. Does anyone have any questions on the floodplain overlay district?
I got one question for Kelly. Will, is there a fine in place from the federal organization if we do not put this in place? Or is it just a matter that these homes will not qualify to being in a floodplain?
There is no fine. The consequence is that the residents that are required to hold flood insurance will then need to go through a private insurer, which is extremely expensive as opposed to the federal program, the NFIP, that is less costly to residents.
Wonderful, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Does anyone have any questions about the floodplain overlay district? Yes, sir.
I will be brief. Ray President, three Gary Drive. I just, one question. These, we want to be compliant with the regulations. But were some of the regulations we have not compliant, and that's the reason they're being changed?
I have no idea whether the regulations we have are compliant or not compliant. We have asked them to update regulations and to do an examination across all of our regulations. Do you have any questions about the floodplain overlay district, sir?
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
That's what we're talking about, right?
I can answer. These regulatory updates to the floodplain regulations are typically done prior to a new map adoption, meaning the FEMA floodplain maps. So my understanding is that there are preliminary maps coming out, and therefore, to prepare for the final adoption of those maps, we should adopt these regulations so that we remain compliant when the maps are out. So we're compliant as we stand today?
We are compliant now.
Correct.
And the ones that we're changing now are because...
Because I'm anticipating in the next few months, there will be a map update. And if we don't adopt these floodplain regulations now, they'll be out of compliance at that time.
And these are federal regulations, correct?
Correct, from the Code of Federal Regulations. They have a minimum standard.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anything further?
I'll make a motion.
Accept the motion.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second for ordinance 2023-06, an amendment to the Londonderry zoning ordinance relative to section 4.6.3 of the floodplain overlay district. All those in favor, say by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Chair votes in the affirmative. We adopt ordinance 2023-06. Ordinance 2023-07, an amendment to the Londonderry zoning ordinance relative to adding hospital as a permitted use in the Gateway Business District. Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So presently, our zoning ordinance includes a definition for hospitals. However, we don't define a district in which hospitals are listed as a permitted use. Recently, this has presented some challenges. We've had several conceptual discussions with developers who want to do the hospital use and develop a hospital without a direction to guide them in. So staff has recommended that we put hospital as a permitted use in the Gateway Business District. That zoning district is held essentially along the Pettingill Road area. And through a work session with the planning board, and then a hearing with the planning board, the planning board was agreeable to that and recommended 701 that the council proceed with this adoption.
Thank you. Any questions from the town council? Any questions from the budget committee? Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to address the council regarding this item only? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, budget committee. My name is Ari Pollak. I'm an attorney at the Gallagher Firm in Concord, New Hampshire. I'm here this evening for Solution Health, known in these parts as Elliott Hospital, and Acadia Healthcare. With me this evening is the Assistant Commissioner of the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services, Marissa Hen, as well as Tate Curti, the COO of Elliott Hospital, excuse me, and Miles Kramer, a Vice President of Strategic Growth for Acadia Healthcare. I'll share with you that Chip Hill, our architect for the project from Stengel Hill Architecture, had also hoped to join us tonight, but the weather washed out his flight. So he's watching on TV, and we say hello to Chip. I wanted to just start off briefly by explaining that we were at least one of the proponents for this amendment to the ordinance to allow hospitals to be located as an allowed use in the Gateway Business zoning district. As was mentioned by staff, hospitals are defined in the ordinance, but not allowed in any of the traditional districts. They can be allowed by P U D. That is the case in Londonderry, but the underlying districts do not allow that use anywhere presently. My clients are looking to develop a medical facility that caters to behavioral health treatment. Not all hospitals are created equal. Not all hospitals look the same. We'll do a little more on that later. But essentially, the zoning administrator determined that this medical facility was best characterized as a hospital, and since it wasn't allowed anywhere, it was best to proceed by amendment to the ordinance, in this case, the Gateway Business District. Briefly, and then I'll turn it over to the commissioner. The Elliott is already on the front lines of New Hampshire's mental health crisis, their medical practices, their ERs, their health system. It's already addressing this problem on a day-to-day basis, and therefore, they're invested in finding a workable solution. Acadia, on the other hand, is the nation's leading provider of psychiatric care. So this is really a marriage of experts, local and national. Londonderry is well positioned to serve as a hub for surrounding hospitals, surrounding communities, and population centers. And of course, your Gateway Business District is a non-residential commerce district with significant connection to state infrastructure, as well as arterial roadways. And of course, amending the ordinance to allow a hospital proposal does not alter the role of the planning board in reviewing a specific project in a specific site in the Gateway District to make sure that it can fit, function, and that its impacts can be properly mitigated, your planning board or your local experts on those issues. And so we asked the Assistant Commissioner to provide some high-level insight in terms of the New Hampshire landscape for mental health and mental health treatment availability and services, and we were thankful that she accepted our invitation.
Thank you, and thank you so much for having me, Marissa Hen.
I mean, Commissioner, we appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you so much. And I doubt I need to convince this article, this audience, about the importance of mental health. I think, you know, roughly one in five of us as residents of New Hampshire is living with a mental health or substance use issue. One in four of us is living with someone in our household. And one of the things I love about New Hampshire is the ways in which we're coming together as a state in a very bipartisan, nonpartisan way, and with partners, both public, private, nonprofit, to really be a national leader in tackling this challenge. One of the things we know, and my responsibility in implementing the state's 10-year mental health plan, is that in order to get people the care they need in the right time and place, we need to do a lot of different things. We need to increase access to mental health services in the community. We need to do all sorts of prevention in schools. We need to really help set youth on a course of getting the supports and the services and the strong beginnings. But we also need to realize that there are times that people in our homes and our communities will find themselves on one of their darkest days, when they need a level of acute, intensive treatment. And as many of you may know, I fear, from personal experience of yourselves, your families, we simply do not have enough acute, inpatient psychiatric beds in this state. Our levels of beds are below that of what is considered adequate from an OECD country average. And so as a state, we know we need to come together with the private sector, public sector, together to invest, to get people the care they need, so we don't have people, both children, adults, people in their older ages, languishing in emergency departments for lack of an available bed to get the care they need, to be set on a course of healing and recovery. And so in order to make that happen, we need excellent players like Solution Health to come forward with creative ideas. We, as a state, are very invested in this project. We're very supportive of the location. We know Londonderry is a community that cares about people, cares about being part of a healing mission in much of your work, from what we understand of this community. And we believe that this is an organization and a proposal that can do it right, that can do it responsibly, that can give people the care they need in a safe way, in a way that really represents their being a good neighbor to their host community. As a state, we are investing a significant amount of resources in this project, $15 million, that will not pay for all of it, but it is meant to demonstrate just how much we believe that this aligns with our vision, our strategy, in order to make things better for all of us, and especially people who are dealing with intensive, acute, mental health issues. So we're very supportive, and we would be so grateful for it to be located in such a caring and supportive and well-located community, is this one.
Thank you.
We have a couple of folks from the Elliott and from Acadia who wanted to speak to the council this evening. But before I do that, I wanted to just make sure the counselors didn't have questions for the commissioner.
Questions?
Not just time.
Anyone from the public, questions for the commissioner?
I just have a question.
Yes, please.
Where's the closest such facility?
I think it would be the Elliott currently. So currently, as was explained previously, the Elliott Hospital provides a significant number of beds, both for adults and for geropsychiatric beds. As some of you know, the town of Hampstead has our only children psychiatric hospital. So this proposal, and one of the things the state will do is we, by giving $15 million, of course, get to ensure that this project is done right, and make sure that it's serving the people of New Hampshire in the way that we all need and deserve. One of the ways is ensuring that there are beds for children. And currently, the only place in New Hampshire that you can get psychiatric inpatient care for children is Hampstead Hospital. To be able to offer that choice and to offer an alternate facility with its own strengths, its own specialties, is a particularly big win for the young people of New Hampshire.
And is there a shortage of beds at that facility?
Currently, Hampstead Hospital is capable of serving about 65. We, our census today is roughly 40. We've been able, part of that is shifting some of those beds to a level of residential treatment that's just under the level of psychiatric care. But I think one of the strengths of this project that the state appreciates is that the Elliott has a track record in this area. They have the partnerships and the ability to attract workforce, and to also reposition some of their assets toward making this successful without... And they're willing to be a partner when it comes to not just draining the workforce resources of other community-based institutions. That's very important to us.
And how large would this facility be?
So 144 beds is the current plan, which would include roughly, well, I'll let the team speak to that, but that would include, as I said, both adult children's beds, as well as that commitment to the geropsychiatric population.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Can you walk us through the process? My understanding is that when these facilities are full, sometimes rehabilitation is a condition of being allowed out of jail, when there's like criminal investigations and things like that, with the overpopulation, or the great need for these increased amounts of beds and stuff like that. What happens to these people who sort of fall through the cracks if there aren't enough beds available?
Yeah, so it depends on the setting, but as you've probably read about and heard in the news, nationally, we have a problem called emergency department boarding, where people in crisis bring their loved one, or they're brought by police or other members of the community, and they end up waiting for a very long time, sometimes days, sometimes weeks, sometimes months, to get into a bed. Now, we, as a state, are actually undertaking an initiative called Mission Zero to help get patients into an appropriate resource within six hours. We believe that no person who's in psychiatric crisis should have to sit in an emergency department, oftentimes deteriorating even further because that's not a trauma-informed, therapeutically appropriate environment. So many of those people, I can't speak to all populations, obviously, those who are involved in the criminal justice system, those who are... But the vast majority of adults in our state who are awaiting a bed are sitting in an emergency department.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
So you mentioned three different kind of, I guess, rehabs, if you want to call it. You mentioned behavior, drug, and psychiatric. Which one is it?
Yeah, they're going to actually give an overview of the types, so it's a great question in terms of the variety. But I think, again, one of the things that appeals to us, and as a state who's invested in this project, is that we're talking about a project that's prepared to handle many of those issues, even when they're co-occurring. So we know that many people with substance use issues, you can't really treat that substance use in a vacuum. You need to be considering all the mental health issues and the variety of other adversities and traumas that are existing in a kind of contemporaneous way with that person. So I think, as you'll hear about the project, you'll hear that they're taking a very holistic view of how to bring in the expertise to meet people's needs.
Please proceed with your presentation.
Okay, thank you so much. Going to ask Tate to come up. One of the things I just wanted to make clear is that, obviously, this hearing does not substitute at all for the role of the planning board in reviewing a particular site application for a site if the zoning allows that application to move forward. Right now, we're really at that 10,000-foot level, looking for the ability to bring that proposal forward to the first step.
All right, so said another way, we're only going to be looking at whether or not we're going to allow a hospital use. This has to go through the full vetting process. It has to go through design review. Plans have to be submitted. It has to go through public hearings at the planning board, just for all of us who are here in town. So thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and the council. My name is Tate Curti. I'm with Elliott Health System. I'm also here on behalf of Solution Health, which is the combined enterprise with Southern New Hampshire Health System and Nashville. Together, we endeavor to embark in this journey with you. We think this is a historical moment. We think that we can turn the tide of the public health crisis that we're experiencing in this state. Quite frankly, I think our communities deserve this, need this. We're very proud of the services we provide, as was previously discussed. Elliott Hospital operates two inpatient psych units, a geropsych unit and an adult psych unit. They're routinely full. We experience almost daily emergency department boarding of patients because of a lack of capacity. The same story is told, not just in Nashville, but across the state. What's I think critical to understand about what we would propose to do is that this really fits into the larger ecosystem very specifically. It will not be the most acute hospital in the state. That will remain the state hospital. But it will be a tremendous increase in capacity for the region. And what we would, what we hope to see is two phenomenons. One is a draw up from the emergency departments to alleviate the boarding pressures, and a draw down from the state hospital, their lower acute folks, that would allow for increased capacity in the state hospital, so folks can access the care they so desperately need, quite frankly, deserve. We recognize as healthcare providers across the continuum that there is real, unique expertise in the space of behavioral health. What we do very well, the delivery of medical and surgical care, we're deeply proud of. And we're proud of the behavioral health services we can provide. What we discovered over the last year in our research and our conversations with Acadia is that they are a national expert in what they do. And combining, within the context of a joint venture, where you have the local flavor, the local commitment to the communities, coupled with the national expertise, we think that's going to be a very powerful advancement for this field, and it has been seen to work throughout the country in 39 different states, which you'll hear from in a moment. So with that, I'd ask my colleague, Miles Kramer, from Acadia, to share a little bit about what the typical profiles of these facilities look like, and what we would be doing together, should we earn your confidence, and engage in the number of downstream approvals, which we're fully engaged and committed to doing.
Please pause. I have a question.
Real quick question. Could you clarify boarding of the emergency room?
Sure.
So people understand exactly what that means?
Sure.
And what that does to emergency rooms at that time?
Sure. So the phenomena of boarding occurs when a patient is treated and evaluated for a higher level of care. In this case, we're talking about behavioral health. A diagnosis has been made, and a referral is put in, and it is determined that they are in need of a psychiatric admission. When there is no bed available for that admission, the individual sadly stays in the emergency department. The emergency department, obviously, operates 24/7, and it is not the optimal therapeutic environment for someone engaged in acute psychiatric distress, to say the least. It has an impact on the other services that are needed to be delivered within the emergency department, because resources are appropriately dedicated to that patient who is in transition, waiting for a bed. So it is suboptimal for the patient, first and foremost, their families, the caregivers in that environment who are frustrated by the lack of availability and so forth. This project helps to eliminate that. Thank you.
Please proceed.
Again, Mr. Chair, and members of the council, my name is Miles Kramer. I'm Vice President of Strategic Growth with Acadia Healthcare. And Acadia is incredibly honored to have been chosen by Solution Health and the Elliott to be the development partner for this concept that we're talking with you about tonight. Acadia is an operator of behavioral health hospitals and outpatient clinics. That's all we do every day. All of our resources, our expertise and our passion is in delivering behavioral health care. And one of the things that is incredibly important to us is partnering with systems like Solution Health. We have 21 joint ventures across the United States. They are clearly more complicated than doing something on our own, but we firmly believe that all healthcare is local, and behavioral health care is extremely local. And so partnering with folks that are delivering on the overall wellness of the community within our expertise to serve this behavioral health population is what we're about and what this partnership is about. We operate in 39 states, and we operate 52 hospitals as of today. We take care of about 70,000 patients every day between our hospital services and our outpatient services. Many of those are substance use services at an outpatient level. That's not what we're here talking about today, but that's part of our continuum and expertise in serving the behavioral health continuum of care. And that is really what we're here to extend on today. As Tate mentioned, there are services for adults and older adults currently within the system of care, and we want to expand that to be able to serve people of all ages in the hospital. So adults, children and adolescents, older adults. And while this won't be a substance use facility, people who have those issues that Commissioner Hen mentioned, that have substance use issues and behavioral health issues, will not be excluded. I'm old enough in this industry to remember when those were two different doors and two different programs, but that's not how the people, and that's not how the patients present to us. So we provide that care at the same time, at the same place, and help people get where they need to go after the hospital. So in addition to the hospital beds that we talked about, there will be outpatient programs that are part of a hospital level of care. So people will come to what we call partial hospital, that's about five days a week, about four hours a day, and intensive outpatient care, that's about the same, but maybe three or four days a week. So patients who come to us that don't need to go into the hospital have that outpatient option, and when patients complete their hospital stay, they also have that option, so hopefully, they don't come back into the hospital and they continue their wellness in the community. I'm happy to talk some about the way a behavioral health hospital is different from a general acute care hospital. If you've never been in one, part of what is really important about them and why we want to build in this concept, a brand-new behavioral health hospital, is to create that therapeutic environment that is safe and secure for our patients and for the community in which it's located. Patients come in through a very secure and planned process. This is not a place where there's an emergency department, and helicopters and ambulances coming in with lights and sirens at all day, all night and day. We will have an ambulance bay to receive patients, who usually will come to us from an emergency department. They've been referred through that process that Tate described, where a physician has determined that they need to be in a behavioral health hospital, and all of our services are going to be tailored to those types of patients. Patients stay in a behavioral health hospital about seven or eight days, and then when they're ready to transition out, they transition out with a plan. They don't just walk out the door. They are connected with community services, and their aftercare is a big part of what we're planning while they're in the hospital.
So, sir, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
I think trying to understand what kind of help you're going to need from our first responders, from local services.
Absolutely.
So if you could tell me a little bit about what you would be expecting from our police and fire department?
So much of what is being provided today to the two hospitals in the community is going to be extended to this facility, although we really seek to be partners with all of the folks that are involved in the behavioral health kind of continuum, is the word we use. So unfortunately, if you have a heart attack, you might get EMS. If you're in a behavioral health crisis, you're very likely to get police. Right now, when the police bring someone to an emergency department, there's a limit to where that person can then be transitioned, and they do sometimes end up sitting in the emergency department. So we will work with law enforcement every day as partners. We can offer training and community outreach. We can work in the schools. There's a lot of things that we do to be partners within the communities that we serve. We do not see law enforcement as a response unit to the hospital. We expect to care for patients that are very acute, that are in behavioral health distress. That's why we build the facility, to take care of those types of patients. That's why we train the workforce, and keeping in mind that the only thing this hospital does is behavioral health. So all of our efforts are about that. All of our expertise is about that. So as opposed to a behavioral health patient in crisis in an emergency department, it's a great environment, they do a lot of great work, but it's not a behavioral health environment. This will be, and while we expect law enforcement to be partners, we don't expect them to be part of our security response.
The police chief's sitting right behind you. Do you have any questions?
I will.
The fire chief's over there. Do you have any questions? Let's just, let's just take them right off the top. They're here.
What I'd like to put on your radar is, so my job is to advocate for the citizenry of this community. All too often, we have these type of things come into our town, and it's a significant draw on the service that the community expects from the fire department. We get nothing for it. So we take on the burden. The taxpayers many times take a backseat to these larger businesses that come into town. So what I would ask you is to be a good partner in industry. This isn't the time for it, but we get together and come up with a plan to build a relationship, to maybe get something so that, you know, we can support you if you can support us. And we'll go very far for the community that, you know, I'm charged to protect and represent.
So I'm thrilled to hear those comments, because we know that you participate in the technical review committee. That's our next stop, if we're able to achieve a zoning amendment and go through the typical planning process. Couple of zoning-related comments while we're on the subject.
Please.
The use is proposed in the Gateway Business District. There are other non-residential uses there that are compatible in terms of impact, traffic, and so forth. We compared this hospital use with other manufacturing uses that are there today, and that would be of similar size and scope. The traffic impacts are significantly lighter. So on a resource level, on an infrastructure level, we anticipate that our footprint will be less intense. In terms of investment in the community, it's about a $60 million estimated build, and this is a tax-paying entity. So in terms of whether or not you were thinking we would have to negotiate a payment in lieu of taxes, or some sort of a contribution, the good news is, we're a taxpayer like everybody else, and we're going to pay our share.
I think what the chief is saying is, that's all great.
Yeah.
He wants to make sure that you get excellent service, and so does everybody else.
We're ready for that conversation.
Thank you guys very much. That's all I ask. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Police chief, anything? You got it. All right, please proceed.
I think at this point, we could maybe pause unless there are questions about the facility, the type of services, things like that.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. If you would like to come up and ask a question, please do so.
As somebody's coming up, the only additional fact I'd put on the table is, we estimate about 270-plus jobs from this facility when it is up and running completely.
Thank you.
Kathy Wagner, 12 McGregor Court, Unit 403, 15 Palmer Road, and four lots on Hovey Road in Pillsbury Cemetery. I think all we're supposed to be talking about is the zoning, and thank you very much for the presentation, but that's for the planning board, not for what's going on tonight. And there's a lot of people here waiting to discuss the town budget. And I'd just like to move the process along. I wish we were in a deliberative session, because I would like to say, can we move the question or get on to the topic of the zoning?
Anyone else for public comment? Excuse me, public hearing.
I'm kinda confused.
Name an address, please.
Oh, Dan Bush at 8 O'Connell Drive, Londonderry. Thank you. So, we're talking, this is an industrial area, all right, and we're gonna put a hospital in an industrial area. I just have a problem when we start changing things in industrial area, because you have companies out there that use all kind of chemicals and everything else, how's that gonna affect if, you know, they have a chemical spill on one of these companies and the wind's blowing towards this hospital? You know, you said you were gonna be paying taxes on it, most hospitals are nonprofit, they're not paying taxes, so this is a for-profit hospital?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, so, I just can't see why we would change and have hospitals in, up there where we can have, you know, industrial areas.
Thank you.
That's my comment.
Anything further from the public?
Maria Barwood, Six Bridle Path, I just have a question, because you mentioned that the, I mean, it's important to have a hospital like that, definitely, our state is suffering in great mental health crisis and overdose crisis, and you said that you're not gonna be excluding people with overdoses or drug problems. My only concern is, with the hospital being proposed in the industrial area, what happens to the people that decide to sign themselves out of the hospital? Is there any transportation provided? Because Londonderry is not a big town, so I'm just worried that, you know, people that need help but sign themselves out of the hospital are gonna send up, suddenly end up on the street and, you know, get hurt or cause troubles.
That's a great question. No one can leave a psychiatric hospital without a physician signing them out, so even if they wanna leave against medical advice, that's not just a, I wanna leave, goodbye. And nobody leaves with a, best of luck, we open the front door. Everybody leaves with a plan, even if they wanna leave urgently in the middle of the night, although we would try to do everything we could to talk them out of that, if they are free to go from a legal standpoint, we would arrange transportation, we do that all day, every day at our hospitals. When someone leaves, they leave with a plan, they don't just hit the street.
Okay.
I have one more question. That's regarding to zoning, because this is all I can question at the planning board. If we make this zoning change, is it just for Penningill Road?
Yes.
Okay.
Just for the Gateway Business District.
Okay. And, we're, it's industrial, and so that was our mistake, was that overlooked by planning that we never had a hospital figured in up there? Or like, why are we, like, why do we need to change the zoning to accommodate a hospital if it is an industrial area?
Mr. Chair, can we have her go over all the different uses as well with her statement that she was gonna provide, so that everyone will know that it's not just industrial uses? Yeah.
Right, I know that, because it's what?
Everyone keeps saying industrial, it's not just industrial uses.
But my point is, what, it has other warehouses, I think we're looking at that, so, I understand that, but...
Okay, we're gonna answer the question, one question at a time, go ahead.
So the question of why are we doing this, is, we already define hospital as a use, but we don't define where it is permitted. So it's already in the zoning ordinance defined, we're not creating a new use, we're just simply looking to, where do we put it, as a permitted use?
And can you give me an example of a, other industry that is close to the hospital that's already permitted up there?
So, professional office is already a permitted use, and within the professional office definition, medical offices are...
So medical offices could be built up there?
Correct.
An outpatient center could be built up there as a medical office, as it is, as it stands now?
Outpatient, yes.
Okay. My questions have been answered.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna bring this back to the board here, is there anybody else? All right, so what they're looking for here is, is that will we, the planning board has recommended that we add hospital to the Gateway Business District only. So what I'm looking for from the council is, is do, one, do you have any further questions? Then what I'm looking for is a motion either up or down, how do you want to proceed?
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 2023-07, an amendment to the Londonderry zoning ordinance relative to adding hospital as permitted use in the Gateway District, or Business District.
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, so come up by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes affirmative. Good luck at the planning board.
Thanks very much.